I call to order the Adrian City Commission meeting for July 7th, 2025. If everyone would please rise for a moment of silence and the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Matt, can you turn us up? Because I know I'm usually really loud and if I'm not very loud, that means we're not going to hear anybody. Thank you. Here we go. Roll call, please.
Mayor Heath.
Present.
Commissioner Roberts.
Present.
Commissioner Schwartz.
Present.
Commissioner Banky.
Present.
Commissioner Miller.
Present.
Commissioner Castleberry.
Present.
Commissioner Gauss.
Present.
All Commissioners members present.
May I get a motion to approve the agenda?
So moved.
Support.
We have a motion from Commissioner Castleberry with a second from Commissioner Gauss. Roll call, please.
Commissioner Roberts.
Yes.
Commissioner Schwartz.
Yes.
Commissioner Banky.
Yes.
Commissioner Miller.
Yes.
Commissioner Castleberry.
Yes.
Commissioner Gauss.
Yes.
Mayor Heath.
Yes. It is now time for public comment for items on the agenda. Just to reiterate, we need you to state your name and place of residence and there is a three-minute time limit on that comment. We will begin inside the city chambers first and then we will open it up to the Zoom participants. But this, this public comment time is only for items that are on the agenda. We will begin now inside the chambers.
Erin Jessher, City of Adrian resident. I just wanted to address the, a few comments made last week on the, on the monument issue. As far as the bricks that are laid at the bottom of the monument, there seemed to be some confusion on whether or not those are donations made or who, whose name were on the actual bricks at the bottom of the monument. So then I went down there and we counted and looked at each brick on the, on the bottom of the monument and it looks like those are all brick manufacturing companies. So those were not businesses that just donated money to get their names on the bricks or individuals. Those were brick companies, big brick manufacturing companies like Logan Block, Townsend Metro, Trimble, Ohio, and Canton Pave Red Granite.
A little bit of an echo. All right. Hearing no more public comment inside the chambers, we will now open it up to the Zoom participants regarding items on the agenda. All right, I was making sure because it sounded like somebody was trying to comment, but maybe not. Okay, moving on to informational discussion topics. We will begin with the IAFF negotiations.
I'd like to move to go into closed sessions. Before we do that, could you explain what IAFF is though for the public?
Yes.
Help me, Eric, the International Association of Firefighters. Thank you.
So we are going to go into closed, well, I'd like to move to go into closed session so we can discuss firefighting contract.
Of support that motion.
We have a motion from Commissioner Roberts with a second from Commissioner Castleberry to go into closed session. Roll call, please.
Mayor Heath.
Yes.
Commissioner Roberts.
Yes.
Commissioner Schwartz.
Yes.
Commissioner Banky.
Yes.
Commissioner Miller.
Yes.
Commissioner Castleberry.
Yes.
Commissioner Gauss.
Yes.
At this time, we will go into closed session. As soon as we are finished, we will come out and resume the meeting. We'll continue on now with our informational discussion topics. I will now turn it over to Commissioner Mary Roberts for the Citizens Academy.
Thank you, Mayor. In the last, the last two years, I have organized and facilitated the Citizens Academy, which has graduated nearly 40 residents in those two years and several of them are in the audience tonight. So thank you for continuing your support of the city. I'm going to switch it up a little bit and we're going to try something different. We're going to not have it in the fall. We're going to do it in the winter. So if you have been talking about it with your fellow residents, friends, well, I guess this is what I should be talking to you guys. I don't have the capacity to do it this fall. Just coming out the bicentennial, I have some personal things and would like to, you know, switch it up and let's see, run it January, February, and March. And maybe there would be other people who might be able to join who do different things in the fall. And Commissioners, I guess, unless, you know, we have strong opinions against that, just want to make sure that that, everybody is on board with that.
I know you and I talked about it and I, I also think that sometimes that change, like I know there's a lot of people that are really busy in the fall and we, you know, there's some people that won't be able to participate by doing it in the winter, but there's people we may gain that can't do it in the fall because the fall's so busy and winter tends to be more a quieter time for being busy.
Right.
So I think that's a great idea, just to try something new.
I think that was one of the requests you had after the first year, Mary. Correct me if I'm wrong, a little similar. People were asking for a different day.
Correct.
At least because they were in, but chambers is used and we have some restrictions on days, but changing seasons, I think, would be beneficial to those that can't do it, you know, that day in the fall because of something. So.
Yeah.
I think that's a great idea.
We did it on Mondays. No, Wednesdays. Sorry. This is Mondays. Obviously, we have meetings on Mondays, every other Monday, and then Tuesdays Planning Commission and without dragging it out. So we did it on Wednesdays, but in the winter, I'm looking maybe at doing it on Thursday evenings in the winter. So there might be an option of people who had commitments on Wednesdays who could come on Thursdays instead. So I know the department heads will play a huge role in this and I, I want to be sure that they're okay, although Vince, at this point, said that, that they will be okay with the change. So we've had some really good feedback from last year. One, one didn't even, you know, one really, really basic thing was name tags. So everyone could remember everyone's names. I'm like, well, yeah, duh. Because I didn't even remember everyone's names, even after the 10 weeks. So yeah, I'll look through all the surveys again and just want to be sure you guys are on board with participating and supporting the, the change.
I would like to also just see, you know, fall has been a busy time for me, but, so I'm speaking that I have not been able to participate as much as I would have liked to have, but I really would like to see more city commission participation so that it's not all falling on you, so that, you know, you're not having to be there all the time. And I know there were a few times you couldn't and somebody else picked it up, but I, I'm really hopeful that our city commission as a whole will, will take this on and help out as well.
Right, right, because I'm not going to be here forever, people. So, so it, it, you know, once it gets organized, it pretty runs itself, except for things, you know, you gotta, someone has to be here to open the doors and lock the doors. Someone needs to take attendance. Someone needs to do the reminders. And so it's not a ton of work, but there is work that goes into it. So, okay.
One, one suggestion I would have, I mentioned this previously. I think that what's taught in the Citizens Academy is probably the finest example of city government and city citizenship that we have and the ability for that to trickle down to students is, is really set forth with if there's an incentive to provide continuing education hours for teachers. So Matt needs so many hours to maintain his, his teaching license. This program can be submitted to the ISD and a teacher can go through this program and they can earn credits towards their teaching certificate renewal. And then the information they learn here goes directly back into the classroom with really good examples. So I can help you fill out the paperwork if you want to use that and they can even broadcast that through the school district to help encourage city residents to apply either through APS or through the ISD too. I know I'm doing that with a program starting in August as well.
Yeah, and yes, I do recall you making that, the suggestion. And as, as I stated before, I wanted to get through a couple of seasons to make sure that it was, we could do it and that it would be run well. And I think we've done that. And so now we're to that point where we can expand on it. So I think that, that's a good suggestion, now that I know what I'm doing, I guess. First, you know, you do the one thing, you do it once and you're like, okay. Then you do it twice and you're like, all right, now we can do it. Now, now we know what we're doing. So. And the department heads have been amazing. Because I just tell them really, you show up, you got an hour and a half and it's pretty much all on them. I give them parameters of what to talk about and they do it. Thank you. That's all.
And moving on to educational topics. And so do you want to turn it over to?
No, I'll, I'll take this because this was my suggestion too. So, so come from, my husband's been an educator for a year, for 40 years. My daughter's an educator. I worked at colleges and universities for almost 30 years. So education runs in our blood. We hear things, we see things a lot as Commissioners that you just go, how, how do residents not know that? How do they not know? How do they not know? Here, I'll give the example. This weekend, during the bicentennial, I was approached and about their, a city, a resident's tax bill. And they wanted to know why their taxes went up by so much money. And I said, did you look at your tax bill? Do you realize about, out of my tax bill? Adrian, the city of Adrian operating is about a quarter of my tax bill. Local streets is, I don't know, whatever that number would be, 5% of my tax bill. The rest of the items on this is the library, the county, the school operating, school debt, school bond, the state equalized tax for Adrian, the LISD, and then refuse. So only two, I guess technically thing for trash. Three things out of this whole tax bill is controlled in any shape or form by the city of Adrian. So my thought is each time we come together, every other Monday, or first and third Monday really, pick one topic. Pick one topic, whatever that is, maybe going, and it's similar to what we do in the Citizens Academy, but here instead, and have someone from the city or a Commissioner discuss. Matt, I told you I was going to pick on you. What's up with the chip seal? You know, we have people who, who complain about that. Why are we doing this? It's a waste of time. It's a waste of money. So topics like that, that we hear about that are current, we don't necessarily have to plan, you know, six months worth of topics out in advance, but what's the current topic that we hear about? That people are complaining about to us, that are questioning about to us? What is that? And is there a way for us to explain that here in front of everyone? Maybe the news media will pick it up and they will get it out to more residents. So it's, it's just a way for us to get more information in the hands of the public. But I'm not doing this on my own. And it would be, you know, it would be a part of our agenda each week. We would have, I don't know, at some point, maybe even in informational discussion topics, we would have education and, you know, maybe it's Texas. I don't know. That's this week's education topic. And someone would come, whoever that would be, and give a two-minute spiel on what are tax, you know, what taxes go to the city.
I think if it was something, I've been thinking about this since you and I talked about it and I think that if, you know, the Commissioners all know when we're going to go have our agenda meeting, it stays the same. It's always the Wednesday before the city commission meeting. So if you are hearing something, you know, submit that, you know, say, hey, what about this for the education, you know, and, and there might be that, and just getting that input before that agenda meeting and it could be determined there. And then it maybe it's a couple of things and we could find out who can actually come to present on that. Maybe Matt couldn't be at that meeting, so we got to put it off, but maybe somebody else could be there that it's a different topic.
Right, right. I think it's a wonderful idea, Mary. And I, one of our wonderful volunteers this weekend for the bicentennial was talking with me and they really appreciated our new Community Development Director sharing some educational components in the last few meetings. And, and she expressed that that was helpful to her because she learned stuff that she didn't know before. And so I think that you are right on point with what I discussed with her and this is a fantastic idea.
Well, and I think it'll help us learn too. I, I was dropping off all the tables and chairs and coolers and all that stuff from the bicentennial and I happened to be in the lobby. Vince was walking towards me and a gentleman looked lost and he had obviously an invoice from the city of Adrian in his hand today. And so I asked, you know, can I help you? And he's like, I got this bill for someone mowing my lawn and I never got a warning. And I, as a Commissioner, even, I don't always remember the process. How, how, so I could only hand him over to Paula, I was going to say Patty, to Paula for assistance, but, you know, I just think that the more people that hear, okay, if you're here, your lawn is too tall, either city staff or someone complained about it. We came and mowed it. Are there warnings ever given? I don't believe so. I don't know that for sure. You know, what is the process? Why do, and why? Why do we request that city residents mow their lawns? What, there is a reason. It's cut down on rodents. It's good to control blight. It's, you know, there, there are reasons. So there's reasons why, and then there's a process. And then what happens if you do receive that invoice? Where do you pay that bill? You know, just so, step-by-step process of all of those things. And that explanation, I mean, how long could that take? Two minutes? Three minutes? I mean, we just discussed it in a couple of minutes. So it's not like it's a drawn-out thing.
And I think it's great to do it just from a proactive standpoint so that people aren't getting those exorbitant snow shoveling bills or those mowing bills because, you know, we contract that out. We don't even personally do it and a lot of people think, why do I get charged so much? Well, it's because we had to get somebody to come out to do it and to keep them from having to pay that, to know those things as well, to use this as a, that proactive approach.
One suggestion I would have is as we look forward with the opportunity for a marketing and communications person to have that person look at identifying topics. And I would suggest that the topic be answered via video and shared here with this body so that we can watch that video and then that video can be put on social media and then also can be searchable on our website. Because if we contain it within a meeting here, it's going to get lost and it's never going to be seen again, or it's going to be, I remember one time I thought I heard this. And then how we find that information to really get out to more than the 40 people who are here and the 18 people online is our objective, not, not, and trying to reach out to a greater audience. And again, searchable and, you know, with opportunity to have that edited.
I agree that that's a good idea, but to Commissioner Roberts' point, I think we can all learn things too, which will make it easier to answer the questions that we may just get half-assed or something. So, yeah, I like the idea. I think it'd be good.
Right, which is why I said it would be shown here too for us to see as well.
Right. Well, and that, that may come down the road, but we can start in person first and work towards that goal. Okay. And I don't know if we'll start next, the next time we meet, we'll, it's just something I'd like to try. And there might not be a topic every time we meet. Okay. Thank you.
Are there any other items that any Commissioners wish to bring forward? All right, moving on. May I get a motion to adopt the consent agenda?
So moved.
Support.
We have a motion from Commissioner Castleberry with a second from Commissioner Gauss. Roll call, please.
Commissioner Schwartz.
Yes.
Commissioner Banky.
Yes.
Commissioner Miller.
Yes.
Commissioner Castleberry.
Yes.
Commissioner Gauss.
Yes.
Mayor Heath.
Yes.
Commissioner Roberts.
Yes.
Motion carried.
Moving on to the regular agenda, under ordinances. Ordinance number 25-003 is the first reading and introduction of an ordinance to amend Article 2, Chapter 26 of the Adrian City Code Fire Prevention Code. This is a first reading only. There will be a second reading and vote at the next meeting. Moving on to ordinance number 25-004 is a first reading and introduction of an ordinance to amend Article 11, Chapter 46, Section 46-509 of the Adrian City Code Operational Requirements to extend the hours of operation for marijuana sales from 9:00 PM to 11:00 PM. This is a first reading only as well. And at the next meeting, we will have the second reading and vote at that time. Moving on to resolutions. Resolution R25-040 is from Administration. It is a resolution to adopt a policy and procedure for the entry of names into Monument Park. May I get a motion to adopt the resolution?
So moved.
Support.
Are there any Commissioner comments or discussion on this?
Yes, I'll, I'll make a couple of comments. First, I'd like to thank Chief Emmerich for taking our information and compiling it all and putting it into a user-friendly ordinance. I think that the biggest thing that we want to get at is that the, the people in Monument Park, the names that are in Monument Park are for people that served actively in war, in service, and also have passed away. I'm not sure what the politically correct term for that is now. And I apologize, I'm, I'm, I'm up on my military acronyms and all of that. So it's for people that have died in war. That's, those are the people that should be memorialized. And so when we use the word memorialized in the ordinance, that is the, the definition of the word memorialized for us. People that have been active in war and have died in war.
Correct?
Yes, ma'am. May I?
Yes, ma'am.
Yeah, sorry. You, you talk about the military, so I reverted.
She, she went back to, she reverted back to the military there.
Uh, I, Mary, we had this conversation this weekend. We, we honor veterans. We memorialize those killed in action or killed in the line of duty. So distinguishing between veterans and, I mean, those killed in action are also, were also veterans or veterans, but we memorialize those killed in action or in the line of duty and we honor veterans. And that was a definition we, we talked about this weekend and I think that maybe helps clarify some of that.
Question related to the last two bullet points under procedure. So the second from last says, those memorials already in existence prior to adoption of this policy will be exempt. And then it says, maintenance of Monument Park will be the responsibility of the city of Adrian Parks Department. So does that mean those already there will be exempt from maintenance by the Parks Department?
The, excuse me, the intention there, those were the last two comments that I received as far as revision and I didn't, I didn't really intend for them to be related. The question came up as to the memorial, I believe it was the garden club had them there, that that would be exempt, that we wouldn't be removing that. And then the other feedback I received was in terms of maintenance going forward and, and taking ownership of that. I think maintaining the park and, and what's in there would be the responsibility of the city and the Parks Department.
Okay, so with the restoration, does that now mean that we're going to pay for the restoration of the monument? Because we're saying it's now the responsibility of the Parks Department. Is that a maintenance issue?
That's how I would read it. Yes, sir.
But I don't believe that that precludes us from receiving donations. It's still the city's responsibility to maintain all parks, but if community members, a resident, anyone, wants to donate to the city of Adrian funds for the restoration, what, what that, what I believe that line is saying, it is the city's responsibility. It is the city's responsibility to make the determination of what needs to be done, when, getting the bids, doing all of that. If other organizations want to raise funds, make those donations directly to us, restoring a specific park, that's okay. Kind of like what we did with Island Park when we put in the, was part of putting in the playground down there. My kids' names are on those things down at Island Park. So if there, if there are groups that want to donate to the funding of a restoration, that's fine. But it's up to the city to make the determination of how it's done, when it's done, who, who is doing it.
It is my understanding that those monuments were donated to memorialize those that we have lost and into a city park and it is the city's responsibility, moving forward, since they've been donated, to maintain those monuments. I think we've been a little bit short-sighted, obviously, on, on maintaining the monuments. Clearly, there's been a call to action for that and, and we can work on that moving forward, but nothing that we pay for precludes getting donations from constituents or residents to help pay for things like that.
And I, I do know, I had a city resident reach out to me concerned about it because there, because of the, there's many heroes that give their lives for, selflessly to like save others, whether that be, whatever it might be, not necessarily military. But, you know, that is what we're, I really want to have clarified here, which we have with the way this is written now, that this is, you know, Monument Park is set up to be that it is veteran, you know, military. It is, it is, it is to honor those that gave their lives that were in the service. So, but that, there had been that question brought up. So that, that is why I really feel comfortable now with this because it's really spelled out and very clear there. So that, that is why I really feel comfortable now with this, because it's really spelled out and very clear there.
And I know Oakwood has the police officers, um, is there a firefighters memorial there as well? Yeah, okay.
There is also a veteran monument in Oakwood.
Yes, there is. Okay, we have a motion from Commissioner Banky with a second from Commissioner Roberts. Roll call please.
Commissioner Castleberry?
Yes.
Commissioner Gauss?
Yes.
Mayor Heath?
Yes.
Commissioner Roberts?
Yes.
Commissioner Schwartz?
Yes.
Commissioner Banky?
Yes.
Commissioner Miller?
Yes.
Motion carried.
Moving on to Resolution R twenty-five dash zero forty-one, it is from engineering. It is a resolution to authorize the acceptance of Rock Hard Concrete of Adrian, Michigan to temporarily take over the C one dash twenty-three contract until a new contractor can be found. May I get a motion to adopt the resolution?
So moved.
Support. Is, uh, is there any discussion or comment?
May I give us a ten thousand foot view of this for the audience, please?
Can you hear me?
Yep.
So we hired a contractor back in twenty twenty-three to complete miscellaneous sidewalk work throughout the city. The contractor has come to us and said that they cannot fulfill their end of the contract. Um, and until this contract is up, we would like to replace the contractor with a, um, a local contractor, Rock Hard Concrete, who is willing to hold the same price, uh, until we can put this contract out for bid and get new prices for next year.
I've noticed the, uh, what they've done already on the Mommy Street Bridge. So I walk that area a lot, and I'm thrilled that the, that the bridge ramps have been fixed. It's wonderful.
We have a motion from Commissioner Castleberry with a second from Commissioner Miller and Commissioner Roberts. Roll call please.
Commissioner Gauss?
Yes.
Mayor Heath?
Yes.
Commissioner Roberts?
Yes.
Commissioner Schwartz?
Yes.
Commissioner Banky?
Yes.
Commissioner Miller?
Yes.
Commissioner Castleberry?
Yes.
Motion carried.
Resolution R twenty-five dash zero forty-two is from Human Resources. It is a resolution to approve the collective bargaining agreement between the City of Adrian and the Local One Five One One International Association of Firefighters. May I get a motion to adopt the resolution?
So moved.
Support.
Is there any discussion or comments on this? We have a motion from Commissioner Gauss with a second from Commissioner Miller and Commissioner Roberts. Roll call please.
Mayor Heath?
Yes.
Commissioner Roberts?
Yes.
Commissioner Schwartz?
Yes.
Commissioner Banky?
Yes.
Commissioner Miller?
Yes.
Commissioner Castleberry?
Yes.
Commissioner Gauss?
Yes.
Motion carried.
It is now time for public comment. This does not have to pertain to anything on the agenda. We will begin inside the city chambers first. Just to reiterate, you need to state your name and place of residence, and there is a three minute time limit. When we have exhausted all public comment inside the city chambers, we will then open it up to the Zoom participants. We will begin now.
Jim Driscoll, Rowland Township, uh, coming before you as Vice President of County Library Board. Back when we found out that the Adrian Inn was going to be sold, I'm told by our director that on two occasions, he sent emails and was responded to. Yet we were not asked to bid or to come forward when the Adrian Inn was sold to Adrian College. And we were trying to figure out why that happened. So I'm coming to ask, just so that we're, we don't want to change anything. We're fine with the, the way it is. However, we're disappointed that we weren't contacted in order to make a bid on that property. Also, after I found out about it, I looked up your agenda for April twenty-first, and I have a question. In there, there was an agenda item that you would go into an executive session about the Adrian Inn, et cetera. And my reading of the Open Meetings Acts specifically excludes when you are selling property for any reason to go in the executive session unless something's changed that I'm not aware of. And if, if there is, I'd appreciate knowing it. Going to switch hats, I'm Jim Driscoll, private citizen, et cetera. Happy birthday. I want to talk about two things. First, Mayor Heath and the rest of you on May nineteenth, what a beautiful service for Staff Sergeant Mauer. Uh, Waggly Funeral Home, and you can be very proud of that. I was in attendance for that. I also come to your beautiful cemetery, Oakwood, at least once a year since two thousand thirteen, since this gentleman to my right told me, yeah, you ought to go to the Police Memorial Day, and I'm glad I did. You have a beautiful cemetery, and Denny V. and his crew do an outstanding job, an outstanding job. And what they did for Sergeant Mauer is unbelievable. And the last thing I want to do, even though I'm three hundred and seventy-second, Kelly, on the list of goodies from the Collins House, three hundred and seventy-second, okay? You don't know what a gem this guy is for you on a county commission. I was there with him from day one in two thousand thirteen, and he is an awesome, awesome representative to you. And I want to tell you in no uncertain terms, it's a good thing he's there now. It's a really good thing he's there now. Thank you for my time.
Hi, I'm Jessie Harrison. I'm from Tecumseh. Today I'm actually reading for my wife because she was unable to be here today. She's at work. As many of you know, there seems to be a push from those at the very, very top to collect brown people. And now it's happening all across our country, in our state and in our town. I come today as the next step in trying to keep our community safe, our community, all of us. It was not safe what happened on June fourteenth when those two men were kidnapped from our town. At minimum, twelve people have been taken from our town. People without crimes, people without reason to be handcuffed and taken from their families, business owners, chefs, laborers, the people who keep our town functioning and looking nice. We know people sometimes commit crimes, and being detained is that next step in the process. However, the behavior and methods being used are that of another country and follow no American values, policies, or procedures. It does not belong here. Not in America, not in Lenawee, and not in Adrian. If you didn't know, one man who was kidnapped has been returned home, and the other man should be coming home soon. Neither one of them have ever been charged with a crime. In fact, they are business owners, family men, and have been in our community for more than eighteen years. I also want all of you to know that you are not powerless. You can help. Anyone can help, because judges do seem to be following the law still. So if you see ICE agents showing up, or you see masked men trying to take someone, you need to begin recording immediately and get as much information as you possibly can. And you need to write your witness statement. You need to get that notarized, and you need to get it to the family. That family can then send it to an immigration judge, and we have found that that is getting people home. Definitely increasing their chances of being released. There's no doubt that a tyrannical government has taken over, but together we can keep our community safe, and together we can bring people home. Thank you.
Harry Collins, Leaven Scott Court, I just want to thank this commission for what you did in the ordinance for Monument Park. As I've said before, that park is known by you. Legally, it might be owned by the city. That park is owned by the names on the monuments up there. They're the people that own that park. They're the people that have the righteous cause, and Jim, you might just moved up to number two on the list.
Hello? Let me get back to the top. Um, my name is Ally Quinn. I live right here in Adrian. I'm here with hope and action to ask again for answers and leadership from this commission. It's been nearly three weeks since June fourteenth, when two men from our community were taken by armed plainclothes men we still can't even confirm were ICE. Since then, this commission has said nothing, no public statement, no explanation, nothing. On Wednesday, one of those men was finally released after paying eight thousand dollars despite having committed no crime and being here legally. His uncle, also here legally, remains in ICE custody. His hearing isn't until July fourteenth, and we learned that without lawyers, they would not have been seen until at least September. When we went, when we met with his wife and himself yesterday, they told us how completely alone they felt, abandoned, until hope and action showed up to stand with them. That kind of fear and isolation should never happen in a community like ours, and it's up to all of us to make sure it never does again. At the last meeting, the mayor said, and I quote, "You hear us." But since then, silence. If you truly hear us, where is the follow through? Where is the action? Because words without action are just noise. I also have to ask, what is the protocol for Adrian Police Department in situations like this? Because A P D. was there, sitting in their cruisers, watching as armed men took our neighbors. They never got out. They never asked for identification, never demanded a warrant. Is this the protocol to just sit and watch? What steps will you take to ensure that no law enforcement in this city or county ever again cooperates with ICE? And that no officer or agent is allowed to conceal their identity while operating in our streets? And I wonder, if these men have looked different, or if they've been taken from a different neighborhood, would you have acted sooner? Would you have spoken up by now? If your own family had been taken, would you still be silent? We are not asking for miracles. We're asking for leadership, for transparency, for policies that protect all of our residents, because safety and dignity belong to everyone equally. I think Mary's suggestion of biweekly updates of important items is a wonderful idea. I ask you to please consider ICE updates and what is being done to protect our community. We still believe this community can be better, safer, braver, and more just. We're here because we know that's possible, and we're asking you to help make it real. Thank you.
Erin Cheshire, City of Adrian resident. Mayor, Commissioners, thank you again for your time today. I come with a clear and urgent request that we take steps to protect the people of Adrian from harm caused by the ICE raids without breaking federal law and without compromising our values as a community. Across the country, we've seen immigration raids happen without warning, without proper warrants, and without care for the trauma they leave behind. It is traumatizing. Let me be clear, we are not asking Adrian to break the law. What can Adrian actually do? A really good example is that we can, uh, adopt a safe city ordinance that is not the same as a sanctuary city. But it includes a rule that city staff and police don't ask about immigration status unless required by law. Policy to not hold or detain anyone for ICE unless, uh, there's a judge signed warrant, not an ICE signed warrant. Limit on sharing personal information with ICE unless the law says that we must, and a clear stance that city resources, like our buildings, equipment, or staff, won't be used for voluntary immigration enforcement. And if Adrian has already, uh, used some of these protections and have them in place, we should probably make the public aware of that in a press release, so people know that they're not alone. When fear grows, public trust fades. People stop reporting crimes. They avoid public spaces. They don't, it doesn't make us safer, it makes us weaker. We are responsible for the well-being of all Adrian residents, and that includes our immigrant families. So I urge the commission to act, please draft, and adopt a clear, updated policy. Let's lead. Adrian always has by doing what's right before we are told to. Thank you.
Rhonda Wilson, City resident. I'm coming before you guys today as a mom, um, and also a concerned citizen for much the same reasons. I have a son who is Mexican-American. He's eleven years old. I cannot tell you the kind of heartbreak that it is when you come home and you, your child sits down with tears running down his face and says, Mom, what if ICE comes to my school? Mom, what if ICE picks up my friends? My child is a citizen. My child should not have to worry about walking down the street with his birth certificate. But he is. My child should not have to worry about his citizen father, who has been here legally for decades, who's a business owner and a well-respected community member. He shouldn't have to worry about his dad being picked up by ICE because he speaks with an accent, because his skin's darker than mine. It's not right. We need to know what you guys are doing to protect all of us, our families, our schools, our children. We need to hear from you. We're hearing lots of silence. We're hearing lots of, we've discussed it, we're considering it. We need answers. We don't need to hear platitudes. We don't need to hear, maybe we'll talk about it next time. We need solid, concrete voices heard from you. Thank you.
I'm Evelyn Quinn, and I live here in Adrian. Is this how it's supposed to be? Do we want our community to live in fear and hiding? A friend of ours cannot attend our protest as her parents are worried for her safety, and they sadly have every reason to be. I saw ICE the other day outside of a church. Our people aren't even safe in their place of God and worship. Innocent men are being taken off of the street by unknown men, held for weeks, and then forced to pay bail for a crime they did not commit. That's ransom. How is it not? He's a legal citizen with no criminal record. Why did he have to pay bail? These are good, honest, and kind, hardworking American citizens who deserve every right we all do. These are human beings with families and souls and emotions, and we treat them like dirt. Immigrants and slaves built this country, and we treat them, we treated them poorly then, and we treat them no better now. I'm asking you to fight for your people. They are unique and beautiful beings who deserve respect and compassion. You say you hear us and you care, but there have been no changes, and actions speak louder than words. Thank you.
My name is Nora Bader, and I'm an Adrian resident. The last time I was up here, I spoke about how unsafe I felt and how I know most of the community feels unsafe currently. I was assaulted four days later at a peaceful protest, and nothing's been done since. The perpetrators were in a, a vehicle that was registered to a dead man, so they're untraceable. The detectives are doing what they can, but I, it's not enough, because if it can happen to me, it can happen to anybody. And then I'm sitting here listening to everybody speak about Island Park today. I went there recently with my young siblings, and I was walking through the playground with them, and it is insane the condition that it's in. If I could approach and show you some pictures, that'd be, is that okay? Could I do that? It's like, okay.
I also know that the last time we were here, you were speaking about building a new park closer downtown to help bring younger people into the downtown area, give them something to do. But that's what our current parks already look like, and I think we need to focus on maintaining what we already have to offer in Adrian before we worry about adding on to it. I do walk the streets of Adrian. I do see suspicious vehicles all the time. I see people walking through Walmarts and Meyers, looking over their shoulder because they, they don't feel safe here. We're not safe on playgrounds. We're not safe in public. We're not safe with permits or with police.
We're not safe on playgrounds, we're not safe in public, we're not safe with permits or with police around. Doesn't matter who we call, nothing's done. And it's time for action to be taken. This isn't fair to us. We deserve a bright, and safe, and loving future. That's all we're here to ask for today. Thank you.
My name is Amelia Pizana. I'm a resident of Adrian. And I'm here to, again, ask for accountability for what, as many have said, are transpiring in our community with our migrant community. We are a diverse community. We are a community of Ramirezes, Rodriguezes, Garcias, Pizanias. We are a migrant community. And for 20% of our community to feel like they have to walk around with a birth certificate because of the color of their skin, including my own family. I don't have to do that. Do you want to know why? I'm not brown. And that's scary. That's unsettling. That's not somewhere that I recognize. And I would ask our city to speak. Silence is very loud. We've been here, we've asked, we've been placated, we've been told we've been heard, but when there's no response, it doesn't feel like we've been heard. I know many of you here are business owners, you're educators, you're neighbors, you're hard-working members of our community. And I know we can do better, and I'm here to ask for us to do better collectively. We need more than a group of citizens tracking these people. We need more than people showing up at this meeting to hold accountability to our commissioners, our police officers. We need more than that. We need action, and we need a statement on what our procedure is. That's what I ask, and I don't think it's a lot to ask. I think it's something, there are precedents in other cities who have come out, as stated before, that they're not going to be cooperating that way. And I ask you all to consider how it would feel to have to walk around and feel unsafe in a community that you have lived in your whole life.
Keith Miller, City of Adrian. There's a few things I want to talk about. I noticed on the packet on the bills that they paid this month, you guys paid $4,896.39 for Verizon, T-Mobile, AT&amp;T GLDC, AT&amp;T Mobility, and Frontier. Why do we have so many different plans? Why can't we get one plan, get it downsized, so we're not paying $4,896? Most companies will give you a bundle plan. I don't understand why they're not doing that. Another thing, I am all for legal immigration. Everybody here, this is a country of immigration. I am all for legal immigration. But when you come through our borders illegally, I don't believe you belong here. You should be gone. And I am a little bit upset. I'm upset that the police did not help ICE on June 14th with that problem that they had. I know the mayor, and I know the city police, they all knew ICE was here. There's no way that they would come into town and not tell you. So you guys knew it. I just, I don't understand why everybody's so upset over illegal aliens being removed. They cost our country... I'm talking, thank you.
No, to us.
They cost our country billions of dollars every year. Billions. So, I mean, I'm a taxpayer. You're a taxpayer. Everybody's a taxpayer. It's our tax money going down the drain. It's getting spent on something that it shouldn't be spent on. And you guys can get mad at me, or upset at me, or whatever, but it is a truth. It is a plain truth. If you're here illegally, you don't belong here. That's like you breaking into somebody's house and living there. You think you live there? You don't. You're there illegally. Monument Park's another thing. I don't get around because of my disability. But I was able to go through Monument Park Saturday morning, and I was appalled by the condition of the Monument Park, by the monuments. It's a city park. Why haven't they kept up with maintenance for that over the last 50 years? Because it does not look like it's been touched in 50 years, other than the grass mowed. The cannon carriages, they're all decomposing. They're about ready to fall down. How come none of that's been addressed? That is totally lack of maintenance. I am amazed by Trestle Park. I went into Trestle Park first time I've ever been there, and I was amazed by its beauty. Thank you for your time.
Ian Cipello, Adrian. I'm going to change gears just a bit. Number one, I want to thank the bicentennial committee and all the people that worked on our weekend of festivities. I'm sure that any of the Adrian residents that attended had a wonderful time, and we had visitors from all over coming. Thank you for all your dedication and time. Now, the educational topics, I think that's a good idea. I suspect, because there's some things brought up tonight that could be added to your punch list already. So I suggest you keep a running tab, because I think we have plenty of topics to talk about for several weeks. Thank you.
Hello, Ben Mormon, City of Adrian resident. Hello. Bicentennial, lovely. Well done, Mary and Mayor Hayes. Everyone, hello. I have a different message, not from me, from the gentleman that was freed. He says, "Thank you. Sincerely thank you to everyone who has been coming, who has been speaking up for him, what I have heard from the Hispanic community, and from his family." The entirety that breaks my heart the most is, "I didn't expect anyone to care." I know we all care. It's so apparent. I know you all care. I know you're working through red tape in a system that is being designed so that we lose. But we won. We won for those two men. We will keep showing up. This is not the country that we know. And I don't really particularly care if anyone thinks that it was wrong of us to intervene or are unaware of the hours of training that many of us have taken for legal observing, as well as with the immigration offices, about what you can do. Because this is what we do. This is America. This is Adrian. And I am very, very, very grateful to be able to bring that message to you. The adrenaline from meeting a man that I thought I would only know, almost as an obituary, is like, still kind of happening. But he says, "Thank you." And his uncle will be free very soon from us writing letters and showing up. So please continue to do so. Please continue to push through. And this room, we might be here, you know, saying a lot of things that you guys, but we also are behind you. We are with you, and we will stand in front of you for when you make those decisions and you push back against this. So, thank you.
My name's Chip Moore. I'm a resident of Adrian. I want to thank the commission for doing a good job for the 250th, well, 200 bicentennial committee for the City of Adrian. There was a good police presence during that whole time, especially during the fireworks. It was a nice, nice show. And I was able to host two of the Japanese delegation, which they enjoyed their time here. And also, I want to thank whoever was the city manager, what you did, marking those parking lots, even though they're not paved, that came in handy during the celebration. And I know, as we grow, one thing I noticed tonight on the international code, first one, as a business owner owning three buildings, I'm kind of concerned about the key boxes that the fire department wants to put on these buildings. If I'm interpreting it right, I'm not sure. Chapter 5, Section 506, Point 3, 1, 2, 3, 4, requiring to have a lockbox. My understanding, back years ago, there was a fireman that had, that used a lockbox to enter a building without, it was not for city business. And I'm just wondering, if the city's going to allow these lockboxes to be, have access to by the fire department, if they were to start a fire, will the city hold, will they pay for the liability for any damages that's done by the fire department? Because I think this is very unusual. I think it's, we haven't had these for all these years. I just think something we should look at about the lockboxes. And I just want to make sure if I'm interpreting it right, I may not, but this is only the first reading. That's why I wanted to bring it up. Thank you very much.
At this time, we will open it up to the Zoom participants.
Hi.
Hi.
My name is Brett. I'm a Adrian resident. I would just like to address the man that was talking about the them taking, that the ICE's taking the illegal immigrants. They're taking the legal immigrants too, so that's something that's happening to everybody. That's happening to legal immigrants as well. So, before you start talking about something you know nothing about, let's not get it twisted. Thank you very much.
Hearing no more public comment, we will now move on to Commissioner comments. And I know that you've made a public statement, Chief Emmerich, to the press after the June 14th. Can you address that to everyone here about what you said to the press as well? About checking into what you did at that, that you knew once you found out they were here? Like, what, to verify that they were ICE? Like, can you at least address that? Because I know that's something you can address.
Sure. On the day of the protest, we had an officer who was passing through on his way to use the restroom. He's the one that got flagged down. When he found out that ICE was in town, he contacted his supervisor. The supervisor arrived on the scene with one other officer. And part of their response was to call back to dispatch and verify that ICE was in fact in town. So we did identify and verify who they were. I know that vehicles and markings were plainclothes, and a lot of that is a concern, because now there are copycats out there doing the same thing. So if there is a concern, definitely get in touch with us, and we can verify those things.
Thank you. And, you know, just to clarify that, no, you don't want to make a bigger target here. Like, by claiming sanctuary city, by claiming safe city, those practices, we've looked at it, we're following those practices already, but when you make a statement like that, it makes a target, and that is the last thing we want to do to our citizens. So I just want to make that very clear.
Mayor, I have a couple of things. We talked about, a little bit about the parks tonight, but I don't know if any of you have noticed that Jeremiah Davies has taken upon himself within his budget to create some amazing park signs. So please take a look at the new signs that are, that have popped up at a few of the parks. And he is doing what he can within funding. We just funded our firefighter contract for the next three years. And we we only have so much money. We are doing the best that we can. So if residents want to help us, other than taxes, or non-residents, if people in the community want to come and use our parks like they do, they are welcome to make donations, and we will use that money appropriately. So that's one thing about the parks. One thing about the bicentennial, actually, technically, two things. There was comments about the capsule contents and what was in there. And even though I read them on Friday, we will be going through and cataloging them with the Adrian District Library Historian. Myself and Erin Bloom from the library will be cataloging all of the items. And the main thing is that we will be trying to locate the residents that belong, that those items belong to. Many of the envelopes were family envelopes, so someone created an envelope, and it says specifically, "This is to be given to the descendants of John Doe." And they list their descendants. And so, some of the items in the time capsule will not be opened by the City of Adrian, because that envelope is sealed and will be given to those descendants. We will catalog who they are all from and who they go to, but we're going to need some help in some of those envelopes, because I knew a lot of the names, but I did not know all of them. So just know that that's going to be a process. I've already been reached out to someone who lives out of state, who has an envelope, and he obviously would like his grandfather's envelope that was written to him. We will get through this process as quickly as we can, but it's going to take some time. So just keep that in mind. At the next meeting on July 21st, the sponsors and the committee members will be recognized. So we will also do like a recap of the bicentennial. Did not have capacity for it today. So if you were, you know, involved with one of the sponsors or a committee, please put July 21st on your calendar to come to the City Commission to be acknowledged for all of your efforts. We really appreciate that. One thing that may have been missed in tonight's agenda, and that I know Chief Emmerich is thrilled about, we are at full capacity with our Adrian Police Department for the first time in, I don't know, a long, long, long time. And I know that makes the chief very, very happy, and it will assist us in many ways on road patrols and just everything. So we are thrilled that we are able to have a full capacity for our police department. The last thing that I was asked, I was interviewed by the Toledo Blade last week. I thought they were calling about the bicentennial. They actually, and we're like, "No, I'm calling about Siena Heights University's closing." And this is me speaking, not in any, this is not a city statement. I just want people to know that, yes, am I saddened by it? Yes. Am I concerned about what's going to happen to the resident, or the people that work there? The property, the surrounding area? Yes. But it is very soon for anything to happen, and it's a whole nother year from now. So please allow a little bit of time for us to work with the Siena Board of Directors and staff through anything. through anything that we can assist them with. So just know that we are aware and that we are concerned, not, you know, and that we're, yeah, we're, we're sad. As one, two, three, four, five of us are former Siena employees and a couple of them are Siena graduates up here. And two of my children are Siena graduates. So um, yeah, that was a sad announcement.
I would also like to acknowledge um, and thank Mary Roberts for chairing the bicentennial committee and for all the hard work. And she was everywhere and doing, and really running and gunning and uh, but we just really appreciate the passion and energy and hard work that you put into it along with the bicentennial committee. So thank you very much.
I would uh, echo what the mayor said in regards to uh, Mary's leadership. Um, it was needed and you stepped up and the success um, was all because of your leadership. So thank you uh, for that. Also, uh, thank you, mayor, for um, your efforts and uh, thank your father for the, the construction of uh, of the gate as well. Um, also saddened by the uh, announcement of uh, Siena. And I guess uh, what I would like to challenge us to do and probably through the community development department is I've been doing uh, uh, some research on colleges that have closed across the country and the success stories that have come through um, those closures and the investment and the reimagining of those uh, locations, uh, some here in Michigan, in the Detroit area with uh, similar small Catholic universities. Um, so how we can partner with uh, Siena in those talks, but also use that wisdom and knowledge that Lisa has from the federal level um, to see what uh, opportunities uh, lay before us uh, would be exciting uh, to discuss. Um, you know, I spent 27 days in Amsterdam. And during that time, as a Catholic, I never understood what the term of pilgrimage is. And I hear about that, but I have to say, you know, my, my time there was spent studying um, the Holocaust. And um, it was quite the pilgrimage. Taking the steps from the house that Anne Frank lived in and walking the three and a half miles that she walked in July to the annex. And as we think about the fact that she was not a resident of Amsterdam or the Netherlands, there are too many comparisons from uh, that time to now. And it was interesting because the mayor of Amsterdam had some, some comments where she recently issued a public apology for her city's failure for looking away as Jewish citizens were rounded up and deported. The city government and municipal services there helped enforce one anti-Jewish measure after another. Legal laws that were passed. And the mayor at the time said, I could resist and I would be taken away. And they would just replace me with another collaborator. As laws changed, more restrictions were implemented and the local bureaucracy became part of the machinery of evil. Her words were not just a reflection on history, but a warning. Governments are judged not only for what they do, but also for what they allow to happen in their presence. We in the city of Adrian must take this to heart. We cannot be silent witnesses. We cannot afford the comfort of neutrality when fear is stalking our neighbors and our fellow parishioners. We must do better to protect our residents, documented, longstanding, church-going citizens. And it's our responsibility for their dignity, their safety and their rights of every human being who calls this city health. This is not about undermining law enforcement, but about ensuring that all operations uphold transparency, accountability and trust of our community. We must clarify the role of our local law enforcement. And we've heard this from Chief Emmerich and we've had discussions about this already with um, community leaders and how we can continue to refine and communicate that out to the public is essential. We hear today that in the absence of true information and accurate information, where the ignorance exists, creates panic, creates fear, creates the unknown. And we need to communicate properly to ensure that our community leaders, that those people here today have the information that's accurate before them. I think of myself when I drive down the road and if I were to have a vehicle behind me with flashing lights that wasn't identified, what am I supposed to do? I think drive to the nearest police station. And if that's not the case, I think about, am I going to be run off the road because I'm not pulling over soon enough? And that becomes a fear. And how do we communicate that um, so that our residents know the proper way to respond? I've watched the commission meetings uh, since I've been gone and I know that we haven't discussed this and there hasn't been a response. And I think it's important to have some type of communication to show that while people have indicated that we don't want to be a sanctuary city, that we don't want to be a safe haven, that we don't want to, you know, whatever term is going to be used because we're fearful that um, ICE is going to come or increase the rates, those sort of things. But what can we do to communicate to um, to ICE? What can we do to communicate to our residents about what's needed? You know, I say that the argument of, well, people aren't in uniforms is a shallow argument because then they just show up in uniforms and do the exact same thing. So that's that, uh, we need to look beyond that. And how can we, how can we help ensure that our, our residents are here? How can we help uh, ensure after speaking to local pastors that we're supporting our neighbors who are in need? Our neighbors who are not able to attend church services, our neighbors who have been here for over a decade working in our neighborhoods, paying um, taxes and providing um, providing services to us. So I'd like to place this topic on a future study session um, so that we can talk, we can learn and discuss our role and let us explore how we can develop clear ideas that ensures the safety and confidence of our residents, especially those who are currently living in fear. We can't look away. We're Adrian. We must lead with courage, not with our silence.
I want to thank every one of you for courageously coming to these meetings and sharing your thoughts. I want to thank you for, even though you're afraid, standing in a protest, um, still being afraid of what happens. But no one has the right to throw things at you or put their hands on you, no matter what, right? Ever in this country. Um, so try to remember that and don't be afraid to stand up for what you believe in. Um, cause that really bothers me that you're afraid. Um, I, clearly I have been in the military. Um, we've seen violence escalate in the Middle East again. I'm very Irish, if you didn't know, very Irish. Um, uh, we're seeing violence escalate between Ireland and Northern Ireland again, where, you know, peace has been there since the late nineties. Um, we're now seeing violence escalate in our own country. And I have been able to travel all over the world. I've been to the Middle East in, in very tumultuous times, things like that. Um, and it is, I am fearful to, to see that happen in my own country. Um, the, some of the atrocities that I have seen, I am very fearful to see that in my own country. Um, my kids spoke Spanish before they spoke English because um, one of my best friend's husband is from Mexico. Uh, her family is Spanish, uh, Mexican as well. Um, so I have some very deep roots in the uh, Mexican families in this community. Um, and I'm very, very, very proud of them. They are extremely admirable people and important to our community. I think one of the things we need to remember is our job here is to do the business of the city of Adrian. We are nonpartisan. We do not let the Republican Party or the Democratic Party or any other party dictate what we do in this community. When I came home from the military, I was very, um, I had a very heavy weight on my shoulders because I thought, I saw things that I couldn't explain. And um, my dad is the retired police chief and he brought me to a meeting with the Adrian Dominican Sisters. And some of them are here. Um, and we were talking about what we now call human trafficking. And if you don't know, not only is Adrian one of the first communities to um, build so much with the Underground Railroad, but we are one of the first communities in the United States to be so heavily educated in, in anti-human trafficking work. I mean, kudos to us as a community for educating our, uh, you know, our community, our county. And it, and it, it expanded from there to the state and even they sent me to Florida um, to do education um, about human trafficking. And that all started with, with the grassroots groups with the Adrian Dominican Sisters. What you have started grassroots is incre, is, is, is important. Don't forget that. Don't be afraid. Don't let the government, don't let the municipal government tell you what to do. Be free here. We have a constitution for a reason. We have these things. Be free to do what you think is best and just do it. Um, that, that is what we need. That is what we as a commission need from you. Um, is to go do what is best for our community. Be a community, be people, love these people. But I think Ben talked about seeing um, meeting that gentleman. He didn't meet him beforehand, but I mean, what, what we do in the community, when you see someone walking down the street, a smile, a nod, those, those go so far. So far, you have no idea what else, you know, if someone's having a bad day, smile, nod, hello does to another person. I think those basic ideas, ideals that we hold very strongly in this community, we have to rely on them moving forward. Don't rely on government to do all the just work, because it's never going to happen. It's never happened in, in, in human history. We have to rely on ourselves to do the just work. So continue to do the just work. And I, I know Erin and Ben very well. So, you know, I just, I have to say something after a picnic, I had to holler at Ben because I saw Ben fixing the American flag downtown. You know, he could be very mad at the government right now. But he climbed up the pole and fixed the flag because things like that matter, little things like that matter. So please don't stop. We, we have some things to figure out, obviously. Um, we, we have some fears for our community and our people and we don't want to rush things and mess it up and make it worse for sure. Um, so I know you don't want to hear, we're, we're thinking, we hear you. I know you don't want to hear that, but if you know me, you know what the work I've done in the last 25 years. You, you know, I'm not sitting on my hands um, not hearing you, I promise. And if I see something, you can bet I jump in, um, no matter what. Um, so thank you for coming and sharing. Thank you for standing up and sharing your voice every day. And thank you for being a catalyst to, for positive change, whether it be in the city of Adrian, the county of Illinois, the state of Michigan, or the United States as a whole. Thank you for being a catalyst for change, positive change. You're not going, we're not going to make the change you desire, but every one of you that is doing this hard work are going to be the catalyst that makes positive, positive change. So thank you for doing what you're doing.
At this time, we have discussion regarding the purchase of property.
I move to close and go into closed session to discuss the purchase of property.
Second.
We have a motion from Commissioner Banky with a second from Commissioner Gauss. Roll call, please.
Commissioner Roberts? Yes. Commissioner Schwartz?
Yes.
Commissioner Banky?
Yes.
Commissioner Miller?
Yes.
Commissioner Castleberry?
Yes.
Commissioner Gauss?
Yes.
Mayor Heath?
Yes. Yes. Uh, when we are done with our closed session, we will come out to adjourn the meeting. But before we go into closed session really quick, can you just address how we can go into closed session for this? Uh, our city attorney, I'm asking, just so that we have clarification on that, since that came up during public comment. Sorry, I should have asked that before.
MCL 15.268, section eight, paragraph one. Subsection D is to consider the purchase of or lease of real property up to the time and option to purchase or lease their real property is obtained.
Thank you. We will be in closed session and we will come out to adjourn. Thank you.
So.
Oh, sorry. May I get a motion to adjourn?
So move.
Support.
Okay.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Meeting is adjourned. Thank you, everyone.
Thank you.